I'd like to call this meeting the Epsom County Board of Education. The board, first item of business is staying in place. I'm glad to be here.
...................................................
Row call, all members are present with the exception of Dr. Almond and Dr. Samuels. Next item of business is approval of agenda or agenda adjustments?
We need to sign the mission statements.
Oh, yes. Okay, let's step back and do the mission statement. Mr. Martin?
The mission of the Epsom County Schools is to provide academic preparation, social responsibility, employability, and a desire of lifelong learning.
Thank you. Item four, approval of agenda and agenda adjustments?
The only adjustments we have are to personnel, which is your attachment eye, and they've already been included.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays. Motion approved. Next item of business is approval of minutes for May 9, 2017 regular meeting.
Fourth paragraph down, it says upon motion made by Mrs. Long, I think that's me, so we need to adjust that.
I will correct that. Sorry about that.
It's okay. But I am reading.
Okay. With the changes made, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion is approved. Next item of business is acknowledgements and announcements of Epsom County highlights.
Come around. We have a lot of recognition to make this evening. Can we first start with our keys of excellence? We have our professional employee of the month for May is Mandy Neely. He'll come up front. I'll present you at his place. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You have to stand up here and get your picture taken.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Oh, and I have to read back to you.
Oh.
I almost forgot.
Do it on the soundboard.
I don't know, I've done this every month for, I don't know, a year ago. I can't tell you. Mandy teaches second grade at French Creek Elementary School. Mandy willingly participates in our school and PTO activities to benefit our students. She has recently written grants to help meet her students' needs. She helps organize school PTO events. Aside from those things, she is always kind and positive with her students. Mandy attends trainings and conferences to better herself as a teacher, but she also does research and seeks supplies for grants to benefit her students in school. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Next, I would like to recognize our young writer contest winners. Every year we have students from all of our schools that will write essays that are sent to the state to be judged, and they do a wonderful job. Our directors at the board office usually are the ones that read all of them and pick the winners. They don't see the names until it's done, so it makes it very fair. So at this time, I would love to recognize these students if they will come up when I call their name. Our first one for grade one and two for the county is Sophia Brown. Sophia, come on. Congratulations. Did a great job. And, oh, what was I going to say? Her story was called, or her essay was called "Finally Seeing My Mom," which was really nice. Good job. She can.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wait at the speaker.
Good job.
Our grade three and four winner was Catalina Kennedy. Is she here? Okay. Hers was called "My Trip." The title of her essay was "My Trip to Clearwater Marine Aquarium." Boy, you lucky girl. You got to go there. Congratulations. I'll shake your hand. Good job. Think I shake everybody's hands?
Congratulations, well done.
Congratulations.
Our grade five and six winner is Juliana Stark. Juliana, she wrote about my favorite subject, snakes. Oh, and she was also second, oh, I forgot, I almost messed up. She was also second place winner at the state.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did a good job. Great job?
Our grade, whoop, I get mom, get picture. Our grade seven and eight winner was Alexis Lee. Her essay was called "Summer of Lies." That was a good one, actually. If you liked it, there you go. Congratulations.
Well done.
Congratulations.
Our grade nine, 10 winner was Carter Glover. Congratulations. I could turn around and get your picture taken. Should have had a multiple. And our grade 11, 12 winner was Hannah Eschman. Her essay was called "The Tears of God." Congratulations. Good job. There's your certificate.
Welcome.
Congratulations. Good job. Good job.
Next, we would like to recognize our retirees. Some of them retired at the end of last year after school's out, and the rest have retired this year. And I believe we had 16 retirees this year. And I always like to give the fact that amongst these 16 people, we have 450 years of experience.
Wow.
That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean Jeff Cutright has been here 400. Although it seems like it. So as I call your, as I call your names, please come up and we recognize if you're here. I know Twila Abel is our secretary, secretary at Fred Everly, and unfortunately, the staff of Fred Everly, well fortunately for them, was having a big shindig for them for she and Dr. Cutright this evening, so food, certificate, you know, they're going to miss Twila, going to miss all these people, that's for sure. Bill Bennett, bus driver. I saw him early, so I know he's here. Yeah? One more.
Thank you so much.
You may have to give this to Karen, I guess. She works at the board office. Bill, by the way, is one of our bus drivers. Jeff Cutright, bus driver. Here's one for you.
I'm going to cry.
Turn around, get your picture taken.
One more.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
As I mentioned earlier, Dr. Michael Cutright was, is our director of Fred Everly, and he's retiring. He's done a fantastic job at Fred Everly. He's going to be very well missed, very much missed, and like I said, but he's going to go move to the beach, so I'm kind of jealous. I don't see her here, but Maureen Divine Rhodes, teacher at Ken Upsher High School. I don't believe she's here this evening. She's retiring. Donna Echess. Alice Howell. There she is.
Thank you.
Our cook at Rock Cave Elementary School, Mary Hyer. And I believe my first year superintendent, Mary, was also selected as the state service person of the year. And I got to go to, I got a free dinner out of this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And another one of our bus drivers, and I don't believe he's here, Melvin Hyer. One of our guidance counselors at Ken Upsher Middle School, Carrie Corey.
Then you don't have to recover.
Thank you.
I've got to say about this next person, when I was principal at Main Street School, and then we moved out to Union Elementary, I was fortunate enough to be able to take most of my staff from Main Street to Union, and we were just talking, I think a couple weeks ago, this is the last person left from that group that went, moved out to Union Elementary, Robin Oldaker. Congratulations. You will enjoy it.
I will. Thank you. Congratulations. Enjoy your retirement.
And actually, this, the next lady, she was an aide for me out at Union, and then I think she retired, and like some other people that are a little crazy, came back and is now retiring a second time. Vonda Jo Pennington.
I think this one's it.
Got to keep that boy ahead. Turn around here, get your picture taken.
All right. I'll give you a hug.
The next person I do not believe is here, was a music teacher at the middle school and elementary schools, Jane Wymer Godwin. I don't see her here. Okay. Our next, well, this guy was a bus driver. I don't know what we're doing to bus drivers, but that's about four of them that are leaving. And he was also our director of transportation, and he told me he wouldn't be able to be here this evening, Doug White. And last but not least, Vicki Walton. Is she here? Do you not hear either? Okay, well, from personal note, I would just like to say that I've known every one of these people for a long time, and it's been a privilege of mine to be able to work with them, not only in the capacity, professional capacity, but as friends. A lot of these people are also friends of mine, so congratulations, good luck. From the six months that I was retired, I know you'll enjoy it. You will enjoy it. It's hard the first week, but after that, it gets real easy. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Amanda from the Record Delta has requested all the retirees, if you would go to the hallway, she would like a picture, and we'll take a short recess. I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Next item of business is item number seven, unfinished business?
Mr. Rigger is home ill, so basically, we're getting our priorities set after the summertime. I don't think you mentioned last time, but the city, they're changing out our, because I know we voted one meter, because they have to upgrade. There's two meters, one the city's paying, the other we're paying part of it, because it's a huge meter, but that will be done this summer also. But everything else is lined up for the summer.
Okay. Number, item number eight, financial?
I've given you the financial reports for April, and we continue to run below the last year's base of heading categories and expenses in total. This was for the first month, so we've kind of increased the salary on items. I think that's maybe accounting difference, maybe we paid out some things professionally last year. Revenues are looking pretty good. Tax revenues have been very good so far this year. We're still going to decrease a little bit next year, but we've had a pretty good year with that. If I didn't exceed it, so if there's any questions, I'd be happy to.
Hopefully, it's coming back soon. We're supposed to get some pipeline, doesn't seem to happen.
I also am seeing that potentially the price of tax for that's supposed to increase for the top of that feeding homes, but for public taxes, it's different.
Mr. Glover, do you see anything, you know, becoming a problem or, you know, a major expense coming in if we have?
Not for the current year. We've pretty much curtailed most of our spending, except what we have to do to keep things moving. Normally, as soon as school's out, we'd be starting a lot of maintenance, construction projects, and we don't have as near as many of those in plan, which there's some things we need to care about, obviously, we don't have any major projects.
How comfortable do you feel with the budget? With the financial situation?
Better than I did.
Yeah, okay.
The Medicaid program has been a big issue.
Yes.
And we finalized our 15 cost report, our 15, we owe some money, we haven't paid that yet, but we'll be able to met that against future revenues. But we also submitted the 16 report in December, and then they went through a desktop process with that, that they had a lot of questions, and I answered those, and that's, I think, they finalized. And I'm anticipating we would collect a couple hundred thousand dollars in revenue that's not our budget for that, and that's for last week's week. And we'll hopefully, as they get into this old salary process, and we'll do the 17 cost report during the summertime and get the audit done a little quicker, because we, you know, we finished 16 until December, they wanted to do the cost report, so hopefully that will speed it up, because that just kind of came from screeching hull, and we really put an edge on our budget, so hopefully that's thick at the time. And then the feds won't do anything.
Do you know any, of any state legislation that's passed that's going to affect our budgets at all for next year?
Well, obviously, the state has not passed a budget.
Yeah.
For next year, and I don't even know that for sure, but forget it, budget for next year.
Right.
See how that plays out.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the financial reports?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number, number nine, public hearing on 2017, 2018 budget?
To continue with that conversation, obviously, the state has not finished their budget for next year, which could have an impact on our budget, but we have to prepare or present our budget based on current law and current instructions from the Office of School Finance at the Western Department of Education, and we have done that, but we obviously had a budget workshop a few weeks back, sent to you the changes that were made, which were fairly minor, over $30,000 plus $100,000 budget, which was very significant. We had to publish, the intent of having the budget hearing, we did that, we posted it on our website, a summary budget is posted on our website, and it will be published in the paper in the next week or so. I've taken one of these budget books and put it out, and someone's come to ask questions or called me to ask questions, and so the budget has been prepared according to current state law and the instructions from the Office of School Finance, and if you approve it tonight, we will submit to the Office of School Finance, and they will review it, and we'll always come back with some comments or corrections that we'll make. Then the state boards will approve it. Obviously, if the legislature finishes their work and makes significant changes, then we have to go back to the drawing board and figure that out, but we'll have to wait and see how that plays out. But we do need to follow current state law and do our budget process as prescribed in law.
Do you feel any differently as far as funding, trying to fund 4H and stop our youth, or the library?
Those were some of the changes that I made, and I put those funds in there as they were requested, and again, I think action from the state.
Right. Could help or hurt.
Yeah, actually, we can easily dip that into the framework that we have. Obviously, we still need to be prudent and try to reduce wherever we can, and there's some things later on coming up that will help that, but I think we have a better budget than we have this year.
Okay. Any other comments? Please?
Thank you for all your hard work on this. Couldn't imagine doing all that, so.
The things, the actions that you've taken in the past couple months have helped make that better process, and I know it's thankful, thankful for people.
Yeah.
We have to live with our needs.
So item 10 is approval of the 2017, 2018 budget. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the budget as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 11 is the consent agenda. We have an approval of additional chaprooms for Washington District School for 2016, 17, attachment C. Do you have any questions?
Motion to approve, as presented.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 12, correspondence.
The only thing is what you are very much aware of, this is our last week of school, hardly, not going to be in June, and we have graduation this week. Wednesday is the senior sermon. I'm not going to miss something.
Thursday.
Thursday's the awards assembly for seniors, and Friday is the senior breakfast and practice, and then that evening, graduation. So I'm sure you'll all be there.
Absolutely.
What time do we need to do the graduation?
Graduation starts at 7:00.
7:30?
7:30.
Are you going to ask me this? 7:30?
I think it starts at 7:30.
They usually ask them to be there at least.
Half an hour. Forty.
If you want to be, because it's pretty congested in that area.
I just tell them like about what time you guys?
Yeah. I usually try to get there about 6:30. I'm there an hour ahead, so anytime after that.
No problem.
All right. Item 13 is a prevention resource officer update. We have Rocky Hip, CJ Day, and Mark Storey.
Where do you want us at? You don't have a code?
Up front.
You need a podium.
I'm going to go first, because Rocky won't shut up, so I want to get my number ready. Really don't even have any formal statistics, it's been that good of a year. I've only filed eight petitions on kids this year. As for reasons why, kids just, it's just getting better, and I shouldn't take all the credit for that, but I'm going to, because I want to keep my job. But no, there's been some great changes in the school with, you know, with administration, with just the way different things are being handled and some preventive measures, and just getting out there and being with the kids more and making sure they understand our expectations, and I think our visits to fifth grade, we get them started right away with knowing what's expected of them, and we just reinforce it throughout the year. So as for statistics, I mean, that's been it on my end. I've met with kids daily. I have kids that'll come to me, whether it's, you know, a problem at home, a problem, you know, with other kids, or just want to chat and say hi, so that's on a daily basis. But other than that, it's been a very, I hate using the word quiet, that's a bad word for police officers, but yeah, so.
Have you done anything different this year as opposed to other years that maybe you've seen why, why, you know, we had a decrease in these things?
Nothing's been different. I think it's just, as, and as we go on with this program, yeah, the kids are getting to where they're used to us, and we're getting out more, I mean, we've gotten out more in the last couple of years and visited the elementary schools, and definitely with the addition of Mark at Academy, I think we're going to see it even get better and better. I mean, you know, we still have, have some road bumps ahead of us, you know, but we'll take the issues as they come, but like I said, I mean, it's just, I think they're starting to get used to the program, and they know, you know, and I think the camera system that we've got too has been a big help. Since we got it last year, we've seen a lot of, we've been able to solve a lot more, so we've definitely been headed in the right direction even with that.
Great.
Any questions? We've got something.
The only question I have is, I was under the impression Rocky was playing the guitar, and you and Mark were going to sing, but.
I was going to dance. I don't sing. All right, Mark.
Thank you very much.
Actually, Amanda from the Record Delta is going to sing as well.
All right.
Who am I going to dance with?
First off, I'd be want to thank you. I'm getting ready to start my 27th year in law enforcement. This is my most rewarding. As far as statistics, I'm just going to mention some things that have happened here. As a new officer, this is a new program getting off here, and it is, I've heard a lot of claims being put on teachers. It's not the teachers' fault, but what the kids do. This year, well, actually, yesterday, we had a gym teacher punched by a student, because they got mad at him. This year, we've dealt, we had a student came to school with a handful of ammunition, passed it out. We've had two gun incidents, and one of the guns was very realistic looking. I think, I don't know how many of you have seen the photo of it, but I do have a photo on my telephone, very realistic, pulled it out on the playground. We had another student that threatened suicide here at the school. Safety patrol, which is something new that started here at this school this year, observed a young lady with what they thought was a knife. I went to the teacher, teacher went, got the backpack, opened it up, and it was a knife about that big. It was fake, but it looked real when they pulled it out just all of a sudden. I had a felony arrest inside the school. I was walking down the hallway, had been to one of the classes, and when I came down the hall, I passed a guy in the hallway, and I thought, this guy looks familiar, and I went straight to the office, looked at his sign-in sheet. He didn't come up on our system, but I knew the guy's name, and I called the office, I said, look this guy's name up. I'm pretty sure he's wanted, and he was. I called for other officers, they came immediately to the school. We come down the hallway and actually had him in a room where nobody could see, and we actually got the other room to look down properly. Another incident we had was a domestic inside of the office, involved four people, had escort three of them out of the building, and it was child custody. We had another child custody incident just last week. We had another child custody incident just last week, and the guy did make some threats, and that's alarming. Another incident we had was funeral home felt to notify us that they were having a military funeral, and when you hear shots fired, the school goes on lockdown really fast. And bullying is always a big concern here at school. It's always on board. We're losing a valuable asset here this year at Miss Sikkafus. She's going to the middle school. She's very, I've been with her in so many of the classes here, her not acting in the classes, in the classes, she's been a valuable asset. Heard a lot of people say, why do we need officers in school? There's a lot of reasons why we need officers in school. It's not like it was twenty or thirty years ago. Used to be to walk into school, you can't do that anymore. Pretty much, that's just, there's so many things that have happened here. I found out, I don't know how many drugs, drug paraphernalia in and around the school. Every morning when I come on duty, I do a loop around the school, I go to the playgrounds, I check the equipment, and I'm finding alcohol, I'm finding needles, and our camera system here is not very good. And if something were to happen in the school, I don't think our cameras can catch the incident. So that's one thing I add. I even actually worked on a grant to try to get a new camera system and it was rejected. And I would like to see some cameras or a better system here for the school. Because right now, we only have a few cameras inside the hallways and they're not very good, and it's hard to get on the system. But I do appreciate the board for everything they've done and, you know, I love my job. I love it, and I hope to stay here for a long time.
Hope you're here for a long time.
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Mark, I'm telling you, I'm apparently new to the program myself, but I gotta tell you, I've heard nothing but great things out of Mark, from what he's doing there at Academy, and the relationship he's building with the kids and the staff's tremendous, as well as CJ, great job at the middle school. So when they come up to me, they're used to having an officer in the school, and they've built relationships with these guys and they do an outstanding job. You've got a couple of great officers within your schools, guys, you really do. With that being said, Mark's right, man, your staff at Upstate County are great people. You should be very proud, I know you are, very proud of them, they do a great job. I see the kids love them, outstanding teachers and administrators in Upstate County. I can't, I don't want to give you twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen results of the high school until I drop back just a couple of years. The twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, I had completed forty-five juvenile petitions in the twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen school year. Mostly fights, alcohol. In twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen school year, I had completed twenty-six juvenile petitions, which consisted of a range of alcohol, illegal substances, sexting, and fights. In the twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year, I had completed twenty-three juvenile petitions, which consisted of fights and illegal substances for the most part. Now, we have approximately one thousand one hundred students in Buchanan Upstate High School, approximately. And this year, I completed fifteen juvenile petitions, from a range of fights to drug possession to alcohol use. There are some sexting issues, and the biggest problem that I had this year was social media issues. Holy cow, social media issues are just outrageous. From bullying, the texting, and I've got a ball rolling to try to educate these kids along with CJ for the start of next school year, to educate our youth in sexting and social media issues. That needs to be addressed at the very beginning of the school year. With the counselors, Officer Day, myself, we'll bring in a state police officer in that field too, and also prosecutor's office, and team up to try to educate these kids, don't do that stuff. It's wrong morally, and it's also against the law, and they need to know that. Now, we had done that before, probably with CJ, about three, four years ago, and that youth has moved on, so we want to educate these guys again, middle and high school. So, consequences of stuff. Great school year though, had a great school year. I continue to, I got a lot of students that come to me with issues where they want to, almost as if I'm counseling, listen to them. Parents come all the time too, not taking anything away from the counselors because they do a great job up there as well. I have to conduct law enforcement realm issues, but I try to be proactive more than I am reactive, to gain a relationship with the youth. I've been up there for one of the fifth year now, and I'm getting a good rapport with all the youth as well as the staff. So, great, not a great school year. Petitions have came down quite a bit, which is something that I wanted to see anyhow, but we do have to address the issue of the social media problems.
Have you, what have you guys done as far as, I mean, are you involved in drug prevention programming and heroin, painkiller addiction, all of the things that this region struggles with, like how often does that conversation happen?
I go in every once in a while and teach some classes on the drugs. It is my, it's my humble opinion, that when they get to that level up there, I'm going to put myself, I was a hard-headed young man in high school, okay? I made some good choices, but it was because I was living the right way when I was this size. That's where that needs to be started, which is why I got something I want to propose to you. But, when they get up there, they want to hear, don't do drugs, don't do drugs. So, I conducted in a way to where they make the choice, the bad choice for themselves or a good choice in what their life is, because they're getting ready to go right out, life's going to hit them in the face with a fist, an uppercut. They have to be ready to make the best choice that they can. I do conduct some classes on education, but that man right there puts, does a lot of classes and does a great job at it. I do a lot of those in driver's ed and health classes, and I take their opinions and we conduct a good discussion about the issue. But they don't, they don't want to see a finger in their face saying, you're not going to do drugs and you're not going to drink, you're not going to. It's not a thing. I step back and I hear the same things, man, I hear, what do we do about the drug problem? West Virginia is among the highest in the nation in drug and substances, which affects Upstate County. So when they say, Rocky, what are we doing in Upstate County in the school systems? What are you doing to deter that from coming in? Guys, it's hard to catch that stuff in a school, let alone out in the county, because it is a school. No one talks. You've got, I have laws that I have to go by in order to catch it. But, I have an idea. This is where I need your help. I'd also like to see the county commission jump on board with this too to help out. This is what I'd like to see purchased, which will be a huge, huge asset to not only the Upstate County school system, but the Upstate County in general. I can't believe I didn't think of it sooner. Everybody's always preaching visibility is a deterrent, and it is. Visibility is a deterrent. If you're driving down thirty-three and you see an officer sitting in the median running radar, you hit your brakes. Visibility is a deterrent. If someone's driving the opposite direction and miles down the road, they give you high beams every once in a while to alert you that they're sitting in the median, you're already going to slow down because you know what's there. So my point is, if I can get you guys along with the county commission to purchase me a canine that is with me all the time, everywhere I go, in the high school, I can, he or she, the canine can be utilized in the middle school, at Buchanan Academy, I can take him to where, to the elementary schools, which gives me a reason to talk to perhaps the fourth and fifth graders, hey, this is my canine, this is what he or she does. Straight drug detection. I don't want a bite dog, I don't want a search and rescue dog, I want a straight drug detection canine. One, it is family friendly, people friendly, kid friendly, but when I give the command to search for drugs, it searches for drugs. But here's the kicker, this is the visibility is a deterrent issue. Those that do choose the wrong path of doing drugs right now, they're going to say, Hibb's got a canine in there, it's drug detection, we're going to take our drugs in there, keeps them out. I want it out of the schools.
We all do.
But, if they get caught, I want to see them get steps for help with that. And that gives me a chance to detect it and get them help that they need, and it keeps it out of the school system. Now, the canine can also be utilized out in the county, should the sheriff's department, state police, some city, say, hey, we got this car pulled over, night shift guys are at home in bed with the canine, Marshal Powers nights, canine, only canine in our county. If they need me, Rocky, we need you to come down, have your dog come down, search his house, search his video, which is why I'm hoping that county commission will jump in and help with the board of education on this purchase. But I think it's going to be an invaluable purchase. I'm not talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think I've got it estimated around, and I'm checking and I'm trying to do as much research as I can. Possibly the dog, the training of the dog, myself being trained with the dog, don't quote me, but I think maybe around twelve thousand.
That's a lot lower than I thought it would be.
That is my request. I hope you guys take into consideration, I think it could be a huge asset for our school system, all of the school system. And what better deterrent do you have than that? Students, when they take field trips, they have all the bags, Jack. I'm not making it a prison, but I am going to make it the safest environment possible. Our goal as pro-officers is life, almost life, safety and security. Also added to that is prevention, and this is the best preventative measure that I think I can come up with as far as keeping drugs out of our schools. Thank you, guys.
Just ahead, we're looking into legal ramifications, making sure that.
I know there gets a little touchy in certain areas.
And I think just the idea of a dog walking around with the kids, no, has the potential of being able to sniff out, you know, we're not, they will never go up to a student and start searching kids, but even the ones that come in are not allowed to do that.
All these endorsements are great.
I do want to add to you guys, I've got more letters coming in, and these are all letters of support from every principal, I believe, in each school. You also have letters of support from the sheriff of Upstate County. I know I have more letters of support coming in.
Student council.
Student councils in there as well.
That's great.
Thank you, guys.
I'd like to thank you all for your hard work, and I'd also like to say thanks to the voters of Upstate County because the prevention resource officers are part of our excess levy, and I really appreciate the voters of Upstate County believing in the school system.
And it's working, from the numbers, it's working, guys. I'm so glad you're here. Thank you.
Out of the four teams, we have the National Boy Scout Jamboree Volunteer Use Facility Request, Mr. Buck Edwards.
I'd like to forgive me an opportunity to come and talk to you. About a year ago, county commission was contacted by the Boy Scout Jamboree that they hold down in Fayette County, and they wanted to start a program of community service for those scouts, and they wanted to do it prior to the jamboree starting. So, they came up with an idea, they contacted this Citizens Conservation Corps down in Beckley to run this program, and they're coming to, they're having a pre-jamboree community service project for about five thousand scouts that are coming to West Virginia. The goal of that was, one, was to give them some community service attached to the jamboree for the area that they're coming to, and two, is to help promote West Virginia. So, what's going to happen on July seventeenth, there's about forty Boy Scouts are going to go into Upstate County, along with four leaders, and they're coming here to work on two projects, the boat ramp that we built up at Hampton, and the new walking and bike trail that we're building out around the high school. And they will show up here on the night of the seventeenth, they will work on the eighteenth and depart for the actual jamboree on the nineteenth, morning of the nineteenth.
So, we're literally just looking at one full day?
Right. Yeah. So, what they're looking for is a place to house these forty-four individuals, and we'd like to request to use either the high school or the middle school gymnasium to house them in. In the case of inclement weather, their focus would turn to that school, if you had painting that needs to be done, or chores around those facilities, those Boy Scouts would do that. So, it's an opportunity to get these kids from out of the area, out of state, into Upstate County to see what's going on. We're going to take care of feeding them, providing all the materials and everything they need to do that day of service, we just need a place to house them. And the high school would be ideal for us because, one, the walking trails right there, they can walk out to it, to bus them up to Hampton, it's not too far from there. Then on the night of the eighteenth, we're taking them up to the game farm, having a cookout for them, show them a little bit of Upstate County while they're here.
So, you're requesting bus transportation also?
No, they will have their own transportation. We just need a place to house them. Two nights, seventeen.
Excuse me, sorry. Okay.
And like I said, they will clean up, they will, you won't have to provide anything except a place for them to put down their bed mat, and a place for them to take share and use to rescue.
I asked Mr. Edwards to come get your approval, you should request for use of building, but this is an outside group, like we have with some of the other groups that, I think it's wonderful that they're doing this. I think Mr. Edwards told me they're going to be in all fifty-five counties.
That is wonderful.
Fantastic.
So, we need a motion?
We have an end of approval?
No, you know, I just, I just, I don't think we need a motions, do we do?
If it's an outside organization.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry.
Do we know if, do we know anything in the gymnasium or anything, scheduling conflicts?
I'm going to work with them as far as making sure they have cover, whatever, wherever we put them in there. You know, it might even be easier, depending on how hot it is, in the commons area, and, you know, whatever we can do will work. I told Mr. Edwards I'd be glad to work with them and we'll get something set up with the use of the high school.
Great. And insurance wise, we should be?
I'm sure you can provide a certificate.
I'm sure they have coverage.
Feeding them.
So.
I said, who's feeding them?
We have a couple of area churches that are about breakfast, lunch, and dinner for you. And Joe's Barbecue's going to hopefully do the cookout for us at the French Grill Game Farm. Should be a, should be a fun, fun program.
So, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to accept the request as presented.
A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards, thank you very much.
On side note, the organization that I work for, the West Virginia Methodist, we're buying the Fred Everly House. We're presenting a check to. Uh, we're presenting a check to Dr. Cutright Thursday at ten thirty. If you'd like to show up for that, there's a photo op, and, uh, that house is going to move down to, uh, Fandalen, a family of five that's going to move into that house. So, I'm really tickled to death that we were able to get an Upsher County house, and to be able to pay for it before school's out, and we'll move it down there in June. So, we worked hard to work out the details on that, but I'd like to invite you over for that. Especially if you were going to be in the photo.
Is it at Fred Everly?
Pardon?
Is that where the check presentation's going to be at?
Yeah.
Thursday at?
Ten thirty.
Ten thirty.
I'm only coming if I get a tour.
Well, you can get a tour.
And then in conversation with Dr. Cutright, uh, we had some volunteers that was willing to go down and help you set...
That's what he said.
That was students.
Right.
Right. So students from Fred Everly, that's wonderful.
Yeah, we're going, we're going to make a big deal out of this thing when we get it down there and set it up, and get the media out of Charleston to come up and do a story on that. So, we really want, you all didn't get one of the tiny houses to build, so I was sticking it to the State Department down there to find the big house and taking it down to you.
In hopes next year you'll need another.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So, all right, thank you for...
Thank you. Item fifteen, Upsher County Education Association's End of the Year Update. This is Jamie Craig.
Each year I try to come to the board and let you all know what has occurred during the year. Um, it continued, and this year, the teachers in pre-K through eighth grade each get a certificate. Um, for some of you all that haven't been on the board as long, this is the twenty-fifth year for us to do that, so this has been a longstanding project. It lets each teacher honor a student that maybe isn't the straight A student, but the student that really portrays that spirit of education throughout the year. Each school gets a lamp of knowledge, um, and the students get it in the little wooden box, and it is a medal that is engraved on the back, and the schools get to pick, through their fifth grader is, and additionally, the eighth grade teachers get to pick an eighth grader from each team. We do the scholarship at the end of the year. I feel like this has been a, a really good year for WVEA and UCEA. It's been a difficult year with some of the things in the legislature and some of the things that they want us to do that's going to put more of a burden on the board office with signing every year to have your payroll deduction, but those are things that our legislators have done to us. I know, I'm getting a look, that, that will occur next year, so it's going to make more work for you all. I have been president for twenty-five years, and I am stepping down. This will be my last, um, meeting with the, as a president of the Upsher County Education Association. At this time, we don't have anybody stepping forward, so I don't know what WVEA is going to do, but it's time for some new blood and some new energy to come into this, because I feel like I've done my time. So, I appreciate...
I should say so after twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years. And, and I, you know, this is the thing that we have parents say all the time, I hope my student gets this award because we started calculating, Carrie Sisk and I did, and we, we figured out that we've given out well over two thousand awards in the last twenty-five years. So, I think that speaks well of what we've been able to do over the, over the past years. It all started years ago when some of you all were here, when we did the buy a tile at the high school. That was kind of our big kickoff project, when we took the carpet out of the high school, and we raised a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in two months to do that, when we did not have a levy. So we've done community action projects in every school during that time, and I feel like we've moved forward. I feel like we have worked well with the administration and the administration, through all of the administrations has worked well with us to solve problems, as opposed to some of the other avenues that some wish to take. So, thank you, and I hope you all find a new person that you're going to work with.
Item sixteen, discussion of possible renewal of the community eligibility program. Attachment E.
We, uh, have did this program in phases. We started off with a couple elementary schools, and then we added the rest of the elementary schools, and last year we added a middle school and middle school. And, uh, I'd like to compliment Mrs. Nessro, she's done a good job of doing activities that have increased participation, which maximizes our reimbursement through, through the program, and also to control costs. And so our, uh, contribution to the food service program, because the county, it's not self, entirely self-supported, we have to kick in some money for, um, some cooks. Uh, we get through the state aid formula, but, um, our contribution has actually decreased over the last couple of years, and, um, I'm anticipating that this year will be not the same, or maybe less than it was last year. And when we put the numbers into the budget module that the state gives us for, for next year to continue the program, it looks like the kind of contribution may decrease because the reimbursement rates are increasing.
That makes sense.
In fact, so, I think it's been a good program for us, and I would recommend we continue.
This is a great program. I'm glad we do it.
Okay.
I'd like to motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item seventeen, we have the approval of maintenance contract for semi annual tests and inspections of Dyken and HVAC equipment, French Creek, Rock Caves, Tenerton, Union Elementary Schools for two thousand seventeen eighteen school year. That's attachment E.
Don't want to get tired of these sort of nights out here. Um, as you know, we, um, got SBA grants and lots of county money looking to install these HVAC systems into the schools. Uh, they are, they're kind of new technology. There aren't a lot of, um, technicians that are certified to work on those programs. Face and Area is, is, I think, the only company in the state that is, that their technicians are certified to work on that. And one of their technicians has developed a software system where they come in and hook their computer up to the Dyken system, and, and there's all these inputs and things, and they establish baselines, uh, how it should perform and operate, and I don't, tend to understand all of the nuances of that, but basically, they can come in twice a year and hook that computer up and look at changes in those parameters, and it can be predictive of system failure, and that maybe they can, uh, prevent, uh, things from blowing up. We had, uh, this was a non-Dyken part at one of the schools that, um, French Creek that failed and blew up inside of the unit, so we ended up having to replace the unit. And we could predict things like that ahead of time, and replace a bearing or a motor or something before it explodes, uh, we would save a lot of money in the long term, so, um, they gave us a couple different proposals for different levels of hours. We're going to start out with the lowest level of hours that we can pay for, and see if that...
This is a renewal?
No, this is a new...
This is a new address, okay.
And those, uh, systems are going out of warranty for a lot of the components. Some of the major components are like power, and there's different, periods for different components, but many of the components are out of warranty already, so we, we need to do maintenance on it. We've got millions of dollars invested in those units, in those schools, and this is a very small amount of money to protect that investment.
I just have one, and it might be a typo, the date is six seventeen, sixty.
Sixty.
And it says the price agreement is only in effect for sixty days, so I just want to make sure that we're...
They're, uh, eager to work with us.
They're up to two, so fix all that.
Yes, well, before we finalize this, we'll get all that correct. That's a comment here that people...
Yeah.
So this is for two checks per year?
Yes. And, and, uh, also, if there's emergency, uh, we get a, a reduced hourly rate from what they normally charge.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item eighteen, approval of increase in the dog meal prices for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Attachment F.
Just to keep going here, um, part of the requirements of the federal child incarceration program is that for, um, adult meal prices, you charge at least the cost of preparing the meal. And, of course, those costs increase a little bit every year, and so we're in danger of falling below the cost, so we need to increase those in order to stay above our cost of preparing the meal, because we're not allowed to subsidize adult meals with the third line.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item nineteen, approval of quote for student accident insurance for two thousand seventeen eighteen school year. Attachment G.
Um, this is, uh, an item that's in the excess levy, uh, for us to provide student accident insurance. Uh, it's a supplemental program for parents, that, that, and it covers, uh, students who are participating in sports. Of course, under the Affordable Care Act, everybody's supposed to have insurance, so that would be your first, a lot of defense, but this would help to pay deductibles and some other costs, uh, that parents might have out of pocket if the child gets injured. And it also helps us because it adds another layer of insurance before it comes to us. Of course, schools have been demented from, uh, being responsible for injuries that happened on our property unless we are found to be negligent in some way. Uh, but, uh, when you involve playground equipment and things like that, that's where injuries come. This helps to make sure the parents get a little bit of help with whatever bills they have if the child falls off of the slide, gets injured. And that, that does happen, despite our best efforts. It'd help to sit in on it a little bit, and we put that in the levy. And we always offer this as a, something parents would buy if they wanted. Very few parents ever bought it, uh, but I was surprised when I came into this job years ago to learn that if my child got hurt at school, the school board will pay for the bills, unless, we, we had done, the school had done something wrong. So that's a good program. Uh, we solicited quotes from three different, actually four different companies. One company did not submit a quote. Uh, the company we had last year offered to renew it to the same price, but I got, uh, a lot of insurance, um, got a quote from Gerber Life Insurance, which is a very good insurance company. It's, uh, three thousand dollars less than what we paid last year. So I recommend that we accept the quote from Gerber Life Insurance. And the coverage is actually a little bit better.
I was scared to ask about some coverage, so we, we increased the coverage and lowered the cost.
Yeah, most of the coverage is about the same, but there's a number of them that are actually better.
Great.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty, approval of quote for workers' compensation insurance for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. Attachment H.
Last but not least, um, we, uh, are required to have workers' compensation insurance, and, uh, our coverage has been through Westfield for the last several years, and then, um, there's surprising amount of competition this year for workers' co, coverage. It wasn't, a year or two ago, it seemed like a lot of companies were walking away from the school systems, but, uh, Brook Street has been very aggressive in trying to get back the school systems that they let go a couple of years ago, and so their quote is actually twenty percent less than what we are paying for the current school year. Uh, Westfield actually bid ten percent less than what it was last year. Uh, so the quote's a hundred and sixty-six, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, roughly, for, uh, coverage for next year as compared to, it was two oh eight, almost two oh nine for current school year, so recommend that we accept, uh, Westfield's quote for, I don't know, Brook Street, I'm sorry, Brook Street.
I have a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty-one, personnel, attachment aye? Have any questions or comments?
Are we able to go into executive session for personnel matters?
We can go into executive session.
Do I have a, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to go into executive session for personnel?
Second? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Go into executive session? Do I have a motion to go back in regular session?
Motion to go back in the regular session.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Back in regular session. Item twenty-one, personnel. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel's approved. Item twenty-two, delegations, public comments? No? Board member comments?
Before graduation?
Yeah. Anything else? Item twenty-four, next meeting date, next regular meeting of the board will be Tuesday, June thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, seven o'clock, at the board office.
I will not be here for that meeting, so just checking on form. I will be in Murdochs.
And, okay. So we've got to have you...
I'll be there. I'll be back.
We will eventually have a full board. Item twenty-five, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.